Yeah, I think that's.
September eighth. Is that right? Yeah, we can do it September eighth. Okay. Call to order. Interruption by Eddie.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, if we could give those trespasses against us. We neither sign it to temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the glory of heaven.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Terry.
Here.
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 Number five.
Mayor, before we go, I'd like to, uh, see, like to move to amend at tonight's agenda to introduce ordinance with regard to city policy providing that no person can be employed by the city of Gonzales who is not eligible for city fiduciary and or liability insurance coverage. I'm concerned at the city being responsible, financially responsible for some of this uninsurable on city liability policy. This puts the city at risk of paying out of pocket before all season occurs.
Okay. Got it, Ms. Terry?
Some motion to amend.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend.
You may your motion, you second. You second.
Okay.
I'll second then, okay.
Yes.
Roll call votes, Councilor Woodrow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cynthia Gray James.
Yes.
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 Add it to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, number five. Recognition of Tanti Poshia. Tanta Poshia. Poshie for twenty twenty-five L.A. Middle School Teacher of the Year and daughter Brielle Poshie for twenty twenty-five Louisiana Student of the Year State Finalists. All right, where are you? All right, Ms. Charley, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lori Charley, principal of Gonzales Middle for the past twenty-four years. It is indeed a privilege and an honor to stand before you, Mayor Riley, and counsel to present our dynamic mother-daughter duo, Gonzales Middle School twenty-five-twenty-six Mighty Bulldog Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tante Poshie, and her daughter, our Gonzales Middle School twenty-five-twenty-six eighth-grade student of the year, Ms. Brielle Poshie. Ms. Tante Poshie was selected Gonzales Middle Teacher of the Year, a Central Parish School Board Middle School Teacher of the Year, and then after an even more rigorous interview process, she was then selected a Louisiana semifinalist, finalist, and most recently was named the Louisiana State Middle School Teacher of the Year. Ms. Brielle Poshie was selected following a similar process, advancing from school-level eighth-grade student of the year to district level to state semifinalist and then finalist. To say this is a phenomenal achievement is indeed an understatement. What is the likelihood of Gonzales Middle having a state teacher of the year and then having a state finalist for eighth-grade student of the year and then having them both in the same year and then having them as a mother and daughter duo? I am in awe of these ladies, and I know that my staff and our superintendent and director of middle schools would agree with me. We are so full of Mighty Bulldog pride as I present to you Ms. Tante Poshie and Ms. Brielle Poshie.
Right, we gonna get some pictures right here in the front.
So I'd like to have Mayor, Ms. Poshie, and Ms. Charley first, and then we'll get the council. Okay, and then we'll give the council, if that's okay.
We complete, I used to even know myself, because I'm a little bit of a.
I got you.
I told, I told.
Okay, and then we'll do the Gonzalez, we'll stand next.
Number six. Approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Can we shut the door? Yes.
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 Number seven. Approval of a special event permit request by Latrice Smith and Arthur McBride of Elite Cruiser and Slow-Rollin' Riser to have their annual bike ride escorted by the Gonzales Police Department on Saturday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, I'm Latrice Smith, one of.
One little piece. And they will also have a licensed food truck on the site to serve after the ride.
Good evening, I'm Latrice Smith, one of the founders and president of Elite Cruiser's Bike Bicycle Club here in Gonzales, along with, um, Slow-Rolling Riders, they're also a bike club in Gonzales. We're requesting to have our annual anniversary ride. Um, I think this will be our third year having a ride in Gonzales. Um, it usually, it usually starts at the park, um, over in, uh, in Gonzales and ends in that same actual spot. Um, we're requesting to have a licensed food truck. Normally, in between rides, we actually stop to eat, but I found that it caused a lot of chaos for the police officers trying to keep everybody together. So instead, we generally ride, do the ride, we do make a rest stop at one of the gas stations in Gonzales, and then we continue the ride. And then once we get back to the park, um, people can purchase food or leave and go home. Usually, we wrap everything up by ten o'clock. Um, this year, I'm trying to, um, actually start the ride at seven and have it done by nine, and then from nine to ten, people can actually get something to eat, and ten o'clock, we disperse and go home.
You're doing the same route?
Yeah, we're gonna pass by my house. Yeah, we will.
Chief, you good?
I enjoy seeing that.
You good with this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Number eight. Approve mayor's recommendation to appoint Jonah Jones as the city clerk.
Mayor, I'd like to say something first. Yeah, I have some concerns on whether, uh, this position's gonna be full or part-time position. Also been gotten conflicting information regarding the salary. I was told my city hour would be twenty thousand for a full-time position. Again, there's conflict of information on that. Our ordinance states that city clerk is department head and states CAO and city titles of city clerk. The position proposed tonight doesn't comply with our ordinance, plus we're a city about to adopt a twenty-seven million dollar budget. We need a full-time clerk and CAO. My concerns.
Any other concerns? All right. Need a motion and a vote.
A motion to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve, no second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Terry.
Okay, uh, Councilman Woodrow.
Uh, I'm a vote no, the concerns I stated.
Councilwoman Cynthia Gray James.
Yes.
No, we're the same concerns as Councilman Woodrow.
Councilwoman Meyer.
That's gonna be a no for me also. I think we need a CAO slash clerk.
Yes.
Okay, motion fails, then pass. Number nine. Introduction of a ordinance increasing the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital outlay fund budget for capital outlay purchases to be procured from the Louisiana State Contract.
Mayor, I'd also like to move, amend the motion to include the project of the O.L., O.L., O.L. Connect Street, St. Francis Connector Phase Two. The city committed to St. Elizabeth in twenty nineteen with three point four, three point four million. This commit was renewed in last year's capital outlay improvement budgets. The city has already paid and invested in design costs. As we all know, Highway thirty could use help in the limiting traffic. So I move to amend the proposed ordinance to include the capital outlay project, St. Francis Connector Road Phase Two.
Three point four million?
Yeah. Just want to note, mayor, that last year's capital outlay was eight hundred thousand. That was kind of placeholder, so it was three point four.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
So what was the motion? To amend the budget to include the connector road for St. Elizabeth to connect to St. Francis Parkway. We've been in that private plans for, since twenty nineteen.
It was in the original plans? Was it in the original plan?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
It was.
Okay.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, yes.
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 Okay, before we adjourn, I'm gonna bring.
I need to make the motion now to amend the proposed ordinance increasing twenty twenty-five six capital outlay budget, include the three point four million for completion of project twenty-two S.D. oh-three O.L., O.L. Connector Road Phase Two. That's just introduction.
All right, need to introduction, need to introduce it. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Amendment, for the amendment. So you introduced the capital outlay budget with the amendment of the three point four million for the connector road? It did, the one we did before the meeting.
Okay.
The proposed ordinance for concerning employee insurance coverage. We amended the, uh, agenda to put this on there. So, yeah. I wanna do the same thing with that, is to introduce the ordinance concerning employee insurance coverage. No person can be employed by the city of Gonzales who is not eligible for city fiduciary and or liability insurance coverage. Just introduction. You wanna set that for September eighth?
Okay.
For August twenty-fifth. You need to publish that, right? Yeah.
So. Might have a game September.
September eighth.
Yeah.
September eighth. September eighth, okay. And that will be for public hearing and final vote. Okay, perfect.
Okay, I'm gonna call up the fire chief right now.
My, my news is not nearly as exciting as the meeting has been. June two thousand and two, I started my career here at Gonzales Fire Department, and, uh, beyond any, uh, phantom of, of what it may become, uh, worked my way up through firefighter, captain, district chief, and then, uh, was asked to be the fire chief, was born and told to be the fire chief. It's been good times, it's been trying times, it's been, um, it's been the time of my life. I have accepted a position with the Louisiana State, uh, Fire Marshal's Office. They run the state fire training academy. My plan was to retire here in twenty twenty-seven, when I did my twenty-five years, and go back and, and, and do what I was doing before I came here, which was managing the industrial division. Uh, but, um, Chief Adams, the fire marshal, called me and said, hey, I, I need your help. And, uh, he wants me to be the superintendent of the facility, which also includes the state fire training all over the state when it comes to fire departments. And, um, FEDA, as they call it, is the, uh, recognized certification arm of the fire service in Louisiana. So going from a nineteen ninety-one rookie sitting in a class, being asked, hey, what was your career aspirations? I reached it here at Gonzales. It was the shift commander, the training officer, but beyond my wildest dreams, I never thought I'd be the fire chief here. Uh, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. I wanna thank you, mayor, for continuing support of the fire department. Uh, it's not about me, it's never been about me, and it never will be about me, no matter where I go or what I do. It's about the service. And I think we've come a long way with the service here in the city of Gonzales when it comes to the fire department. We have a top-notch EMS service, we service our citizens well, we don't charge them, uh, for the ambulance rides. We have, we have, all of our senior staff is twenty years and above. We've got a plethora of training, we've got multiple employees that, that, that work part-time as trainer. You have a department that will not fail. It will not fail. If, if things stay the same and they keep moving forward, it will not fail. And, and I feel proud to be just a part of that. This is my last week, uh, full-time, I'll start taking my leave come next week. Thank you for the four-ten's mayor, so I get the three-day weekend. Uh, will not get that at my new job, unfortunately, uh, but, um, it's been a great ride. I'm still in the city, I'll still come to the meetings from time to time. Uh, I'm just a phone call away, and, um, I, I think we leave that, the department in good hands to, to move it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Tracy, I would like to personally thank you too. You, you've done a great job managing and moving our fire department forward. I know, I, I, it takes a lot from, from your whole team in, to be a leader of a team like that, that's awesome, and you, you're leaving a good foundation. I appreciate everything you've done.
Okay, DPW, Mr. Roosevelt Vessel.
Good evening all. First, I'm gonna start off with the drainage department. They're cutting grass and weed eating, picking up litter and trash, patching potholes, straightening up signs, put, they putting in some covers on Lanue Street, they cleaning out covers all over the city, they sweeping streets, taking, taking care of small miscellaneous drainage work orders, they clean trucks and equipment. Utility department repairing water leaks all over the city, checking water wells in the generators, got a lot of L.A. one-call tickets coming in, they doing locates daily, install water and gas meters, they flushing dirty and mains all over the city. Uh, any brown water complaints coming in the city hall, they taking care of that. We got a good report from TMB, our water consultant, about our water wells and our water towers. We taking water samples every day, clean the trucks and equipment. Buildings and grounds, parks and recreation, cutting grass and weed eating, cleaning bathrooms and picking up the litter at parks, they cutting grass at the baseball fields, keeping them ready to play on, they pressure wash the kids' coat park and the splash, and the splash pads, they repaired water leak at Carver Park, they repaired the leak at the splash pads, they repaired water leak at Carver Park, they repaired a leak at the DMV building, they stripped and waxed the council room floor, it's looking good, they cleaned up, uh, rain out of the civic center, and they got the AC fixed at the DMV building, we had a leak over there, and we had a leak here in city hall, they got that taken care of, they clean their trucks and their equipment. Lastly, is the wastewater department, the sewer, they checking lift stations and the generators, they also got a lot of LA1 car tickets coming in, they're doing locase daily. They installed a new pump at lift station number 27, which is on West Oak Street, they repaired a six-inch tie-in at Heritage Crossing, they repaired a manhole cover on East Worthy, they installed an aerator number 14 backing the new pond behind the wastewater plant, they unplugged the main sewer line for Penn Apartments, it was, it was plugged up and it was having problems, uh, flushing their toilets and things like that. They pulled a pump at lift station number 38, which is on, uh, East Valley North Seas, they cleaned their trucks and equipment, and the guys picked up 137 bags of litter. Also, I would like to wish Chief, uh, Tracy Norman, the best going forward. As long as I was the, um, supervisor over the water and gas department, he always had my back, whenever we had problems, he worked with me to solve those problems. So I just wanna wish you well going forward, if it, if it's nice working with you. That's all I got, y'all.
Roosevelt, okay.
All our generators are ready for hurricane, uh, water.
Yes, yes. We got, we got, we got everything, we got, we got water, we got gear read, we got plenty sand, the truck's ready, we, we, we ready, we got, we got all our stuff together.
We changed the one that was giving us trouble, right, with the board?
Say that again?
The generator that was giving us trouble on, what is it, the Roddy Road, I believe it was?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we got that straight. Yeah, it was the one at, uh, Burke Well.
Burke Well?
We got, got that straight, yes. So we, we, we ready to roll.
Okay.
Yeah, so I might be calling you to help us.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Chief Jackson, do you have anything? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Uh, Mayor, before we adjourn, uh, going back to agenda item number nine, introduction of an ordinance increasing the 2025-2026 Capital Outlay Fund Budget for capital outlay purchases to be procured for the Louisiana State Contract. Uh, I know there was a motion made to introduce that, uh, ordinance, uh, with amendments made by, uh, Councilman Boudreaux, but we need to set that for public hearing and final vote for September 8th, if it wasn't clear.
Okay, everyone, got that?
Yep.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second.
Set.